Call the meeting to order. Give just a minute for people to get seated. Let me begin by commending you all for coming out on this very unpleasant evening. It is, I had forgotten how cold it gets around here. And it was not pleasant. And I disliked the snowflakes during the day. Okay, hey, when you can't hear me, when my voice drifts off, go like that, okay? And with luck, I'll see it. See if that gets me from all sides. Seem better? I can see from the audience before me that the quorum requirement is met. I'll ask for the Boy Scout troop 44 to pledge allegiance. No, stay where you are. I didn't see where the flag was situated. To lead the group in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. To the flag of United States of America, to a republic which expands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, troop 44. Return of service, Bill DeMayo, who's the constable.
I attest that the inhabitants of the town of Newbury who are qualified to vote were properly notified and warned of the date, the time, and the location of this meeting.
Thank you, Bill. Want to, as we usually do, take a moment to just introduce certain groups of people who are key to the meeting and thank them for all the work they've done during the half year since we last met. First, the Board of Selectmen, JR Colby, the chairman, Damon Jespersen, vice chairman, Clerk Alicia Greco, Mike Doyle, and Jeff Walker. For the Finance Committee, the chairman, Marshall Jespersen, the vice chair, Linda Allen, Joseph Ali, is he here? He's not here tonight. Gene Case, Tom Howard, Paul Mayette, and K.V. Each of those groups puts in so many hours of work, running the affairs of the town and getting ready for town meeting and keeping the finances straight. It's, they deserve a big round of applause from the inhabitants. Like to introduce our town clerk, Leslie Bailey, the town planner, Martha Taylor, the conservation agent, Doug Packer, planning board chairman, Peter Pykos, Board of Assessors Chairman, Bud Kelly, and Fire Chief Doug Janbrun. There are certain other residents of, non-residents of the town who are town employees and who are apt to be asked to speak during the meeting, so I would like to get your permission now to have them speak. Brian Winner, the Town Council, in place of Lisa Mead, Tracy Blaze, the Town Administrator behind me, Eileen DeVoe, Town Accountant, Mike Riley, the Police Chief, sitting over there against the wall, or standing there, and another, Jeff Shaw, who is the architect for the project. We may be calling on him to speak. I'm going to explain the rules of town meeting in the simplest possible fashion. Most of you have been to town meeting many times before. You know exactly how things are done. But the first rule is, what I say is law. You must obey. I govern the meeting, and in particular, no one can speak legally without being recognized by me. So if you want to speak, you raise your hand. I will, if things go well, recognize you, ask you to state your name and your address in town, and invite you to come to the microphone to speak. So if you want to make a motion, to speak on a motion, you have to, once the meeting gets going, suggest you just come up to the mic, and I'll recognize you there. What else on the rules? Okay, the, you are all familiar with our old method of voting, whereby we had counters and people would be criticized and shamed, and the counters would count the votes for and against, and it all got pretty complicated. So we've replaced the counters with these devices. And I asked Susan Noyes, our Director of Technology, to take over, explain how they work.
Okay, if you're a registered voter and have a stamp on your left or right hand, you should have one of these devices. If you do not, please see one of the attendants at the door. I'm going to hand it over to Jessica Mancini, who's going to go through some of the directions for the clickers, as well as do a couple of sample questions, so we can all test the clickers and see how they work.
Good evening. As you can see here, it's just a big picture of what you're holding in your hands, you'll see a window where you can see your entry. This is an indicator light that you will see on the right-hand side, and the area that is in the red square are the numbers that you'll press to go along with your votes when it's time. This is a sample of what a screen will look like and what each of the portions are. To the upper right, you'll see the responses and a green light indicating that voting is open. About in the bottom portion is the item that you're voting on. One and two are your answer options, and there'll be a countdown timer for 15 seconds in the right-hand corner. Some additional voting points. Received a device upon signing in. If you need to use the lavatory or exit the auditorium, please turn your device into the attendee or the door attendant. They'll give you a new one once you come back. When you leave for the evening, please return your device to the door attendant. Voting will be open as soon as you see the slide displayed, but the town moderator will also give you an audio cue that says, "Please vote now." You will be given a visual cue for the last 15 seconds of voting, as the countdown timer, which is going to be on the right-hand side of the screen, will click down. Once the timer counts down, you can no longer vote for that item. We're going to go ahead and have a couple of practice questions, just to get you familiar. So here comes the first one. Voting is currently open. In 1977, the population of Newbury was A) 3,895, B) 4,302, C) 4,917. Please vote now.
Right, but you can see A, B, and C on your...
Yeah, it'll be A, B, or C on your countdown, yes.
And the voting is open.
You have 15 seconds, counting down. It's not supposed to stay green. Once you press it, it will light green, and then it will go off. If you press it again, the last answer that you pressed before the time clicks down is the answer that will be recorded. All right, it looks like we have 116 people for A, 99 people for B, 43 people for C, and the correct answer, what is? B. 4,302 people was the population in 1977. And our second question, polling is open. The most recent population as recognized by the town clerk is A) 6,522, B) 6,696, or C) 6,821. Polling is now closed. It looks like we have 52 votes for A, 83 votes for B, and 126 votes for C. The correct answer is A.
Okay.
Does anybody have another, any, yes? Let me take a look here.
What I'd like to do is one exercise that is of a yes/no vote, because that's the form of voting that we will, most likely, so all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no.
Okay, we're going to go to a yes or no, and I'm going to swing back and, oh, you did? Okay. So our yes or no question is, "Tonight, a good night for a town meeting? Press A for yes, or B for no. It looks like 172 of you have said that yes, this is a good night for a town meeting, and 91 of you would prefer different weather for another night, or something else. Are there any more questions?
You're not going to tell us the right answer.
There is no right answer, in my opinion.
Okay. No, I may call on you again when we come to the first real vote.
Oh, I...
To help?
Yes, sir.
We can just go ahead? Okay. Is there anything of general application?
Any other questions?
No, let's save the questions now, because time is moving. So first of all, please turn off your cell phones. No, no ringings, telephone calls, please, during the meeting. Article 1 is a ritual whereby we receive the reports of the selectmen, the school committee, the regular and special committees, and all other town officers, or take any other action in relation there to. The usual vote is simply a yes vote, unless there is something in particular that upsets you. You probably haven't had a chance to read any of the, any of the reports, anyway. But, so, is JR Colby, would you make a motion?
I move that the town receive the reports of town officials.
All those in, will this be our first? There's a second, barring any discussion. Okay, do they vote on this? Okay, so does the screen reflect it? Yes, it does. So the motion carries, and the reports are accepted. I have been merrily voting on everything up till now, and I must remember, I cannot vote unless there's a tie. Luckily, there was not a tie here. Okay, Article 2, which you can read in the program before you, and I would ask for a motion under our...
Mr. Moderator, are we giving a report from FinCom first?
Yeah, would the, do you want to speak a minute?
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to our special town meeting. In just a moment, we'll have a slide up. But while we're doing that, this doesn't require a slide. Before we get into tonight's presentation, I'd like to take a moment to honor a longtime member of Newbury's Finance Committee who passed away this year. Frank Remley was the Chair of FinCom when I joined 11 years ago, and as Chair, he guided us through some tough and turbulent times. Frank was exacting in his analysis of the town's financial well-being. He made well-thought-out and rational decisions and helped us weather those difficult times. After he passed the chairmanship of the committee, he continued to be an active member, continuing with his sage advice and commentary on how the town finances were faring. Frank exemplified the high standard of all of us who follow in here his footsteps. He had integrity, dedication, diligence, and was a tremendous service to the sound, to the town. He set a terrific example. He was a great asset to Newbury, as are many of the volunteers here. He was a good friend, and he will be missed by all of them, all of us who knew him and worked with him. So we'll go on to the next slide? Maybe we'll go on to the next slide, and maybe not. There we go. Okay. So, this is a graphic we've presented before, showing our budget growth over the past five years. This year, we're showing a budget of $20,913,510. And right now, our town is better managed than we ever have had been in the past, and we've been working really hard on that. We have prudent financial budgeting principles. We have been working on cost containment, even though some of you may delta. Our operating budget is well-managed, so that we spend no more than we say we will spend, and sometimes we spend less. The result of this has been demonstrated in a fiscal responsibility that has facilitated our bond rating, which has increased from AA2 up two steps to AAA in the past year. Now, what that means with this AAA bond rating is that in our last borrowing, which was for the police station, that was the $6.5 million, we were able to get a bond rate of 2.49%, lower than we had projected by a good amount. What that translates to is we saved a half a million dollars. Okay? So that has been a terrific result of a lot of years of some belt tightening, some really hard looks at how we control things, and getting all of those under control. Next slide. There we go. Okay. As we look at the budget landscape, this is how we get our money. It looks pretty familiar, I'm sure, with property taxes, our biggest revenue generator at 79.6% this year. Our local receipts, or it doesn't look like it quite there, is about 8%. State aid is actually down a little bit, and we are, let's see, state aid's about 4% now. Available funds, we are looking at about 12% of our income in available funds. So this is where the money comes from, and clearly, you can see that most of it comes from you. Okay, our fourth slide. Okay. So, this is where we spend it. Mostly, it's school. And as most of the towns in the Commonwealth, we have half or more of our budget goes to financing the schools. We have a debt service, which is 6%, benefits to our employees, about 8%, and our municipal costs are about 34%. All right, next slide. This is the current state of our funds. We have in free cash, $2.8 million. In stabilization, we have $647,000. Land sale is $58,000, and the reserve fund is $150,000. This is up from when we started, when I started, 11 years ago, and our free cash was in negative numbers. We have, this is an indication of how we have worked in the town to build up these reserves, and this is why we can get a AAA bond rating and save that money. Next slide. If all items that are on the warrant pass tonight, this will be how we end up tonight. We'll have, we'll have free cash of about $1.5 million. There will be no change. We're not looking for anything out of stabilization, the land sale, or the reserve fund. So, thank you very much. We'll be here to answer questions as they come up later on in the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Jespersen. Okay, the next item is a, first of all, I just want to acknowledge the, on the work of the Planning Committee, that we should all celebrate, that our bond rating has now reached the AAA status. That is a great feather in the cap of the Finance Committee and the work that all officials have done. Next, I would like to call on Bob Connors, who is the Chairman of the Building Committee, and to ask him to provide an update, since the most important article on this meeting will be building of the police station.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Board of Selectmen, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Bob Connors. I'm the Chairman of the Police Station Building Committee. I want to recognize the other members of the committee, because it certainly is a team effort. Eric Sman, who is our Vice Chair, John Keller, who is our clerk, Chief Mike Riley, who is the chief, Deputy Chief John Lucy, and Martha Taylor. Back in April, we provided an update to town meeting, and at that time, we were working through the design development phase of this project. Since that time, I have much to report. As of today, all local permits have been secured on this project. Conservation Commission Order of Conditions have been secured, and site plan approval from the Planning Board has been secured, and we have bid results. The plans were complete, it went out to bid, and the bid results came in. If you look in your packet, you'll see an executive summary dated November 6th. It's the last several pages of your booklet. So going through the bid results, how the bid results work is, there are filed sub-bids, which are filed by individual contractors. A couple of weeks later, each general contractor takes that filed sub-bid information and puts it into a base bid. So when I read through these numbers, that's how that, those numbers come together. So on October 10th, we had five general contractors that bid this project, and the base bid came in at $6,86,314. Now, if you recall back in April, we talked about having alternate bid items, items that were not necessary to secure a certificate of occupancy to the building, but things like, instead of vinyl siding, wood clapboard, instead of Cape Cod berm, vertical granite, instead of lumen seed, full landscaping, instead of no signage, signage, exterior painting, all the things that the neighborhood would probably really welcome to see, but technically are not required to secure an occupancy. technically are not required to secure an occupancy permit. As you move down to the next line item, we're mandated by law to have a registered architect and a owner's project manager, and there is required testing and commissioning agents that are also required under state law. The total for that is $1,7,500. Once you have a building, we have to put something in it. Furniture, fixtures, and equipment, security, card access, communications tower, AV, we have a line item of $550,000. Police station, a lot of technology, a lot of security, and certainly a communication system. That's a subtotal of $7,975,801. Traditionally and responsibly, a contingency factor is always carried. It's a reserve line item. When you're doing a project of this size, there will be changes. There'll be stuff that will be added, there'll be other things that will be deleted, but it is a customary practice to have a 5% contingency reserve. That doesn't mean it will be spent, but it means it's available as those unknown existing conditions appear. So the current estimate of probable cost is $8,296,801. Now, back in 2016, at the October meeting, $6.5 million was the number that was presented. We failed. It didn't get approved at town meeting, but the ballot question in November approved the debt exclusion part of it. In January of 2017, town meeting approved building a standalone police station on the Morgan Avenue lot for $6.5 million. Well, here we are at the end of 2019. Construction's going to be starting, if we're successful tonight, basically the first month of January 2020. Construction costs like this have gone up about 8% a year. 8% in 2017, 8% in 2018, 8% in 2019. Now, looking at the economy and looking over the horizon, I don't think any of us here think that costs are going to go down in the near future. So, time is of the essence, and in all honesty, folks, if we're going to ever build a police station, the time is now. Scheduled, obviously tonight being special town meeting, the bids by law are good for 30 business days. So, we need to, in order to take advantage of the current bids and issue a contract, we have to be able to do that by November 15. Once we've signed a contract, we then give a notice to proceed, and that starts a countdown clock for the contractor. 365 days is the typical time span on a project like this. So, to break that down, if we do not proceed by the 20th of the month, all of the bids that are in hand expire, and the project would have to be rebid. So, that's where we're at, but it's time to build something, people. We've been talking about a police station. My God, I was on a committee in 2012, the original site selection committee, and here we are, almost in 2020, and we're still talking about a police station. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Bob Connors, and thanks to the building committee. I think we're now ready to go on and proceed to Article 2, which has to do with the funding of the job. I move that the town appropriate $1,730,000 to pay additional costs of completing the police station project, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Section 44, I'm sorry, MGL C44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town there. Therefore, any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL C44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Moran.
Jim Moran, 104 Elm Street, I have a motion to make.
Yeah, no, you can read your motion. Okay.
Motion is made to amend Article 2 to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum $730,000 from free cash to pay for additional costs of completing the police station. If I could, I'd like to explain.
Go ahead.
I arrived at $730,000 by subtracting $1 million from the $1.73 million that the town is proposing. I sent this information to the select board last week. I'm in support of building a police station, and if we can compromise, we can build it at a reasonable cost. I agree with Eric that a good team is critical, and right now, that team is in place, and the town is ready to go. Here is where the rubber meets the road, the cost. This is a business decision. Let's set aside all the motions and focus on the cost. There are four items that can save $1 million. $450,000 by deleting the elevator, the other alternates, and the support work for the elevator. $160,000 by changing the contingency from 5% to 2.5%, which is the same as Merrimack is doing at their police station. $300,000 by revising the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment costs. $120,000 by revising the architect's cost. Each of these items, in aggregate, is in excess of a million dollars. I'll be glad to go through these in detail in a minute. I'd like to finish up with a few other things. There's other possible savings on this job, and that's value engineering, which is commonly done, and the committee is aware of, and possibly the generator set could be provided to us by Seabrook Station. I know the town has asked, I don't know if they receive a response to that. I consider this a win-win-win for the police, the town, and the taxpayers. I graduated with a BS in civil engineering from Northeastern in 1969. I started working in the construction industry in 1969. I started estimating construction costs in 1975 and continued to this year. I spent years on construction sites, on detailed takeoffs, estimated bid projects, and managed construction work through my working career. I'm asking you to please support this amendment, and thank you for listening. Are there any questions?
I'll be going to take any questions, so you can sit down, Mr. Moran. What you've heard is a motion for a drastically, building a police station at a drastically reduced cost, cool million dollars, and funded by free cash, instead of by bond issue. And Mr. Thurlow seconds the motion. The motion is made and seconded, and the floor is open now for discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Jaspersen.
I think the proposals that Jim is making do not serve the town well. We have cut this police station and police program again and again and again to make further cuts and underbuild the building, which would last us for 50 years, I think is fiscally irresponsible, and is not a good use of the taxpayers' money.
Does anyone from the finance committee want to talk about the difference in funding?
Yep, okay. Thank you, Jim, for getting up there and giving us your opinion, and we have to realize that this is your opinion. We've looked at this police station, we've come up with some people who thought very carefully about the design, and I'm going to take your largest single piece, which is the elevator. I agree, $450,000, but it is something that we have to put in to modern buildings, and I know sometimes it hurts, because I've built a few of them myself. But, if we get in trouble, we can be ordered to put in an elevator in the building if we have a police officer who has to move around in a wheelchair. If we have to do that after the fact, that is going to be way more than $450,000. That's number one. Number two, the contingency fund. If you have a smaller contingency fund, if you're not going to spend the contingency fund, it doesn't matter. What you're going to need is what you're going to need. That is really no saving. When you add up what's left, and look at what it's going to save the town, we're looking at all of you spending maybe a penny and a half a day for the next 30 years. Is it worth it to change this? I don't think so. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak as well?
Yes, I'm sorry, who's talking? Yes.
The town, Newbury has come a very long way in its finances. We are extremely well managed, we have sound fiscal policies. This warrant before us tonight takes a holistic approach at looking at the town's needs, all of them, not just one police station. I am strongly opposed to changing, amending any changes to what we have laid out here tonight. This has been well thought out, it's sound fiscal policies, and it doesn't risk our AAA bond rating. Thank you.
Mr. Eric Swann.
Okay, Eric Swann. So the slight clarification to the alternates and how the alternates work in public bidding. There were eight alternates, and they were listed in this alternate order. Alternate number one, add a passenger elevator. Alternate number two, cement fiber siding, wood shingle in lieu of vinyl or polymer siding. Alternate three, wood cladding, wood windows in lieu of fiberglass. Number four, vertical granite, Louis Slope granite. Number five, a building sign. Number six, a flagpole. Number seven, park benches. And number eight, plantings. Now, by the bid law, by the public bid law, the order is important, because alternate number one needs to be taken first, and then alternate number two, second, and number three, third. You can't pick and choose which one you want. The sum of what was mentioned, in terms of totals, varies a little bit different from the budget that I have, but there is an order to taking these.
Thank you, Mr. Swann. Mr. Connors?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you recall on my presentation, all of the alternate bid items come into a total of $331,000, not $450,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak?
Yes.
Mike Doyle, Six Morgan Avenue, Newbury. The town voted $6.5 million, okay, and I'm a strong believer in staying in the budget. If you go to a bank and ask for a $500,000 house, you don't build an $800,000 house. So, we could have built this three years ago, but they didn't listen to our vote then. And the vote was, bring it back again, and we'll get the big unit, get the big, okay, but we finally won a vote, we had, they said, no, we're not going to build a big complex. We are a town of 7,000, and we don't even know what a police station's going to need in 20 years, but I think the 6.5, we can build a very good building for this town. And I say we can build it now. We've already voted for the money, build it now with a 6.5.
Mr. Swann? Mike, with all due respect, though, what are you planning to cut? Who wants to build a half a building with no doors, no windows, no chairs?
You can still build a smaller building.
You just say that, but you don't know that. We've gone through it. We've got drawings, we've been out to public bid. What are you saying?
If we wait, we've waited two years, okay? If we did it two years ago, we wouldn't be in this spot now.
Time is now, tonight. What are we going to do tomorrow? What are we going to do tomorrow? I've been doing this since 2013.
I say give them a budget of 6.5 and work with it.
Then we'll call it the Mike Doyle Station, and we'll have no doors, no windows.
It's the voters, Eric. Eric, Eric, excuse me, excuse me, Eric. Okay. Eric, I get to respond to that, I think.
Mr. Moderator, please, please. Mr. Bazerga.
My name is Dick Bazerga, and I live at 76 Caldwell Farm Road. I lived at 26 Green Street for 30 years. I've been in the town since 1975, and I remember when our financial situation was pretty grim. Proud to say that I'm the guy, I'm the reason that Frank Rennley went on the finance committee. But we've heard from everybody on the committees and the boards, we've only heard from one resident, so I thought, maybe the view of another resident. My view is, this town is in very good financial shape, and the reason is the people sitting up here. I have complete confidence in them. I'm not impugning anybody's reputation or ability. I'm a Northeastern graduate myself, and I respect that. However, I have total respect for the people that are sitting up here in the dais, and I have total confidence that they're not interested in spending money that's not necessary.
My name is Frank Bertolino, I live at 10 Maple Terrace. Boy, we've been going at this an awful long time. A lot of us take pride in how we dress, how we speak, how our homes look inside and out, how clean our cars are, the cars we drive, everything we do. It's painful to see some people not take pride in our community. We have police officers that for years have come to work that we would not have. They've done it for us. I think it's time that we just step back a little bit, decide yes. Let's go ahead and reward ourselves, let's reward our police department, let's show pride in our community, and approve this additional funds, get this building built, get this building built, and maybe next year around the holidays, we can be proud, standing outside, geez, maybe even having a veteran ceremony there. But I think it's time that we decide tonight. Approve this extra funds, get this building started, and let's be proud of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bertolino. I've asked Jeff Walker to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Back when...
I actually had a speech prepared, but Dick took it, and he did a marvelous job, probably better than I could, so I really...
So I really would like to say that tonight is a night to be proud. It's a night to be proud of what your town has accomplished. We're a triple A bond rated town. That's like Conket and Lexington type stuff. We're going to be able to borrow at a very good rate. We're going to be able to put a million dollars away in a dedicated fund that's under the control of town meeting to work on our town hall and maybe get us all back to the center of town. It's all on town hall, town administrator, town departments, everyone working so hard, and the board of selectmen striving to do a good job with the finance committee, guys. I think it's unbelievable, and guys, you all said what I was going to say. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think, uh, it's, yes, sir.
Burden Field, sixty-four Main Street by Field. There's been a tremendous amount of work done by the people I'm looking at and other people also. But the problem I have with it is I can't call the retirement board up and say, hey, I bought new furniture this last month, so I'm running a little short. How about slipping me an extra check this month? There's a lot of people that live on just, on just a certain amount of money. We have to live within our budget. We figure out a way of doing it. I have a lot of fun and do a lot of extra things, but I have to plan to do it. I think we need to rethink this.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to call the vote. We've, uh, we've heard both sides. The vote will be on, on the amendment. Now, I've called the vote. It's, we, we've heard, we've heard both sides, sure.
I request to respond and rebuttal to a few of the items.
Jim, I do not recognize you. You've, you've had a chance to talk. You've given your reasons for it. They were cogent. They were understood by the group. And, uh, I'd like to get on to the other articles.
The rebuttal being that what was said in response to my presentation was not totally correct and need some clarifications. I asked as I could.
You, you've had, okay? I do not recognize you. I called, I've called the vote. The vote will be in two stages. First will be on the amendment that is offered by Mr. Moran. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. The, the first vote will be on the amendment. Okay, so, no, what's, what's sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander. I've, I've called the vote. We, we can't, this is just an amendment to the main motion. We're not even up to the article yet. So I'd like to reso... No, I'm, I'm not going to make an exception for you when I won't for Mr. Moran. Okay, the first vote will be on the amendment, which, um, would reduce the cost of the police station, the appropriation for the police station, very drastically with the effects that have been described to you. All those in favor of the amendment will be voting yes. All those opposed will be voting no. If you're for the main motion, you'll be voting no on the amendment. A no vote on the amendment leaves the main motion before the floor. The main motion will be voted on next, after that. So all those in favor, yes. Yes, those, those that are in favor of the reduction in the cost from one point seven three oh million to seven hundred thirty thousand. Yeah, okay. Okay, so if you're, if you're for the main motion, the proposal presented by the building committee, um, you'll be voting no at this time. Okay? If you're in favor of Mr. Moran's amendment, it will jettison basically the report of the building committee and substitute Mr. Moran's motion instead as the motion on the floor. So all those in favor of the amendment, vote yes. You may vote at this time. And all those voting no also, you'll vote A for yes and B for no. The vote comes out. Yeah, this is, the vote on the amendment is majority vote. Obviously, it passes. Now, we'll go back to the main motion. And all those in favor of the motion, this being to, uh, uh, build the police station and appropriate the million, three hundred, seven hundred thirty thousand for it and provide for the bond issue. All those in favor of that motion will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. Okay, is there any clarity? No? No, we've, we've had the discussion. You heard the discussion. No, people, people got up and talked on it. Okay? Until I called the vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. With all due respect, sir, most of this talk that was done in the prior measure was on the amendment only. I don't want to belabor this meeting like anybody, but I do think that it would be fair to have discussion about this, this article as it's written.
Okay, separate from the amendment. Okay, I, I think, I, I thank Bud Kelly for his, as usual, good advice. I will change my ruling, and instead of calling for the vote right now, we'll open the floor for discussion on the main motion. Ma'am?
My name is Catherine Ardry, and I live on Green Street. The Bazergans' old house is now mine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay? I've been here for almost thirteen years. I work very hard to stay there. I spent eighteen years in West Newbury, and in that time, I spent five-plus years on the Public Safety Committee in West Newbury, working towards the public safety complex in West Newbury. I tried to get on this committee, but I was not offered a seat, and I could not do Friday mornings. I do not believe that this committee has represented well the entire community of Newbury, Massachusetts. Number one. Number two...
Which committee are you talking about?
The construction committee, the site committee. Okay? Number two, I do not believe that this building has been well thought out. I know about the criteria that goes into cells and dispatch and glass and all of the federal and state requirements, but this building is overdone. And I am a little bit confused as to how, one person said that they had planned this for fifty years, and this gentleman over here said it was planned for twenty years. I think there is too much money going into ambiguity, and we need some serious clarification. Thank you.
Floor is open. I have two, two people approaching, Mike. Sir?
Just a question on the alternates. Tony Matthews, Main Street. There's a lot of extra money for extra projects on this particular project. There's extras that aren't necessary, but we can still get an accredited police station, like the window upgrades. Do we really need that? Can we save some money by taking the standard, basic windows? A twenty thousand dollar sign? Do we need to have, um, you know, five thousand dollar park benches out front? Can we delete some of those and drop the price down a little bit? Just a question.
Did, uh, did the building committee have public meetings, or were there meetings, working meetings among members? Hey, um, you know, uh, uh, we can't really look at details at town meeting. What we need is for people who are very interested to go to the meetings of the committees that prepare the proposals that come before town meeting. We can't design a building here on the floor of town meeting. So I'd say that by way of defense of our general procedures. Sir?
Dale Williams, twelve Scotland Heights Drive. First of all, I want to thank this committee, all the hours they've given for the last several years, and everyone else that's been involved in this. Quite honestly, I've been in this town for twenty-seven years. I'm tired of putting duct tape on a twenty-year-old jalopy. We need to invest in our infrastructure. The time is now, based on all the reasoning between the bond ratings and all that. It's the time to invest. We will still have one of the lowest tax rates in the county. We have, we're not looking to build a palace. We're looking to build something that's going to serve us for the next thirty to fifty years. And that, quite honestly, the building now is outlive its useful, its usefulness. Less than five percent of the registered voters are here tonight. We are making a decision for the entire town based on five percent of us. It's pretty normal, and there's a few of us that always speak at town meeting. I count myself as one of them. But I'm getting tired of the obstructionists who think they can show up at this meeting and overrule all of the hours and the efforts that are put in over several years to bringing this to fruition. And I'm tired of the obstructionists, and, and I want to speak for the majority of people that either couldn't make it tonight, are busy with families, busy with jobs, just can't come here. It's up to us to vote on their behalf as well. I stand up for them. So I'm here to support our town leaders and all that's, uh, gone into this, and it's just gotten to the point we need to vote yes on two, three, and four. Thank you.
I've, one, two more speakers.
Good evening. My name is Bob Haynes, five Blockin Road, Byfield, Mass. I've seen over the last seven years our selectmen screw us with their designs, along with the town administrator. However, now we have a chance to build the police station. Let's get it over with, drop everything, and do it. Let's go on with the vote.
Hey, after this week, the vote.
Judge John Strong, Craig Loth, Orchard Street. Question on the voting, is this a simple majority or is it two-thirds?
No, this is a two-thirds vote.
This, this amendment is two-thirds?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So we're calling the vote on the main motion, and this is the project as presented by the building committee. To build the police station and appropriate the one point seven billion, I may have my figures wrong, for that purpose. So now the voting is open. So if you want to see the police station get built as a result of this meeting, as a result of this vote, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And the meeting, the voting is now open. Thank you, everybody. Article two is approved. Article three. Mr. Justerson.
I move the town appropriate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds dated October third, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of... Isn't that what I said? Ah, forty-five, I wish it was four hundred and fifty thousand. Forty-five thousand, I'm sorry. I'll start again. I move the town appropriate forty-five thousand from the premium paid to the town upon the sale of the bonds dated October third, two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of design, construction, and originally equipping a new police station and remodeling, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to town hall. Which bonds are the subject of proposition two and a half debt exclusion to pay cost of the project being financed by such bonds or notes and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project, but not yet issued by the town by the same amount?
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's, well, no, we don't do it that way anymore. We, uh, since there's no discussion, the voting will be now. All those in favor of the article? Yes, otherwise, no. Motion under Article three is approved. Article four. Mr. Justerson, do you have a motion?
I move that the town transfer the sum of one million dollars from free cash to the town hall project account.
Second? Hey, the motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Sir, Mr. Thurlow?
Alfred Thurlow, twenty-six Marsh Avenue. I heard a, a change in, uh, from what's written here to what you read. You said to the town hall project, you did not include police station?
There are different accounts. This is the town hall project account.
This reads police station in the, here. Police station and town hall.
You're looking at the motion.
In my motion, I'm reading what is on the motion, and the motion is a town hall project account.
So this is incorrect here?
No.
As written.
Can anyone explain the difference between the wording of the warrant and the wording of the motion?
The wording of the warrant took the title of an existing account, which is the police station slash town hall account. That came from when we first looked at this back in two thirteen, twenty thirteen. What we have done is separated out those accounts. However, this wording, which was put in earlier, was not able to be changed because it was in the warrant. When it came to the motion, this money is going to go only into the town hall account. So I think that's by way of clarification. Yes, you are right.
We know that for a fact. We know that for a fact. None of this is going to the police station.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Moran? I'll read it. Mr. Moran makes a motion to amend Article four, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from free cash to a new account for the Town Hall project. Would you explain it, Mr. Moran?
My reasoning here is to put some money in the account, but the Town Hall has been a forgotten child for the past three years. My last understanding from the town is they were going to start discussing this again in January. They formed a committee. Quite frankly, they haven't decided what to do with the Town Hall. So with $100,000 of funds, they can move ahead and spend some money. And I believe by the time they get to the bottom of this, it'll be in April, and we can further discuss this at that time. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? May I respond? The reason for the sum that is $1 million is that it is our hope that with that and the other funds that we have already set aside for work on this project, that we would be able to possibly get back into Town Hall without needing to come before town meeting again. We may not be able to do that. As we have seen, sometimes projects are much more expensive than we would like. But this gives us at least a chance to get there a lot faster without dragging it out through town meetings over and over and over again. So again, Jim, I'm going to ask the people to vote against your amendment.
Thank you.
And Damon's absolutely right. It gives us the ability to move very quickly towards working towards repairing or renovating Town Hall without any time lost like we've got into on this project.
Okay, sir.
Tony Matthews, Main Street. How much money is in this Town Hall account now?
Seventy-one thousand. Hundred fifty-one thousand.
Let everybody know.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Not seconded.
Is that right? I thought it was. Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry. So we second the motion, okay? So now it's seconded, and retroactively, all of that discussion that preceded it applies to it. And are we, I see a hand raised. Would you come forward? Yes?
Are we addressing the amendment proposed by Jim Moran?
No, at this point, we're addressing the amendment made by Jim Moran, not the main article. Right.
I have a question.
Okay, well, we'll hold on for a minute. And you can, let's take a vote on the amendment. Okay? So the vote is on the amendment, which would drastically reduce the amount of the main motion from $1 million from free cash to $100,000 from free cash to the specific account of the Town Hall project. Okay? Essentially, if you vote yes for the amendment, you're voting no on the main article, on the main motion provided for in the warrant. Okay? Have I got that straight? Okay. The, okay, okay. The, let me take it, historically, the main motion would appropriate $1 million from free cash to the Town Hall building account. The amendment proposed by Mr. Moran would reduce that amount from $1 million to $100,000. I got that straight? Okay? So all those who want to effect that reduction from $1 million to $100,000, okay? It's you will be voting yes, otherwise you'll be voting no. Okay? The amendment, the amendment does not carry. And we'll turn now to the main motion to appropriate the $1 million. And you were waiting to speak.
Aaron Matthews, I live on Main Street. The slideshow that you had posted prior to show what the funds have available now and how you plan to reduce for this project. And when all of these articles mention the free cash portion and that the reserve fund wasn't going to be used for any of these projects, is that correct? Regarding those two slides that we showed, that you showed to the group, the first slide showed that there was $150,000 in the reserve funds. And after these articles, and if they shall pass, reduce down to $108,000.
That, I apologize. What happened was an earlier version of this got into the slideshow. The one that I was working from, in fact, I can show you if you come up here, did have the right side. That was an error on my part. Thanks for catching me.
No, no problem. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, you're absolutely right.
Hello, Fred Davis, 59 Main Street, Byfield. You know, I just wanted to speak a minute about the upcoming Town Hall project. You know, we have $2.4 million, is that correct, in free cash?
His answer was 2.8.
You know, that's a lot of money to be in free cash for a town our size. I just want to let my friends know that if that's not spent on the Town Hall, it might be spent on something less necessary. You know, we need to get this thing moving. I think for years, the voters in this town have wanted a standalone police station, a renovation of the Town Hall. And, you know, I just think that if we do not spend the free cash at the Town Hall, it will be spent on something that we might not need. And, you know, by the time they finish the police station, we should be able to go right to work and do the Town Hall and put this project to bed once and for all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay. Sir, this will be the last speaker. Now, does that money absolutely guarantee that you're going to repair the Town Hall? Do we have any say over that? Could in two years, all of a sudden, see a wrecking ball down there and say, well, we had the money to destroy it, and we decided it would be better off to tear it down? Let's see if we can get someone knowledgeable to answer the question. Mr. Connors?
Bernie, it is an open question. The selectmen are forming a committee to make recommendations back to the board of the selectmen. The options went from renovation, addition, remodel, renovation, replacement, or whatever others. If it has not been...
So that if they give this money, they can't just go ahead and do what they done well, please, they'll have to have another, we get a chance to say whether we want the building torn down or not?
I can go with that. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Connors.
Putting money in the fund only puts money in the fund. We have to go through the design process, and then we have to come back to the town meeting and say, here's what we have, folks. You get another chance to say yes or no, okay, Bernie?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. All those in favor of the motion to transfer the million from free cash to the Town Hall fund will be voting yes. All those opposed to the motion, the main motion will be voting no. And the motion passes. We're into Article five. And I will ask Selectman Alicia Greco to make a motion under the article.
I move that the town approve the fiscal year 2020 budget adjustments as set forth in this Article five of the warrant.
Thank you. The motion is made and seconded. Let me pause for a moment to do something I meant to do before, and that is to recognize the presence at the meeting of our representative in the General Court, Lenny Mira, who has been very helpful in furthering town projects and helping on things the town is interested in. So if someone could tug Mr. Mira's sleeve, maybe he could wave and thank, recognize his presence and thank him for coming. Okay, we're on Article five, is it? Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion will vote yes. All those opposed, no. The motion passes under Article five. Article six, Alaska, this is simply the difficult procedure of paying an old unpaid bill. It's a couple of hundred bucks to Staples. And Mr. Doyle, Selectman Doyle, would you make a motion? Can't hear you.
I move that the town authorize the payment of $211.31 to Staples as a bill of prior year.
Second.
Requires a nine-tenths vote.
Motion's made and seconded. The voting is open. All those in favor of the motion. Great. No, it's unanimous. Declare that it is unanimous. Oh, there was, there was, oh, okay, there were 11 noes. Eleven who don't think we should pay our old bills. It's, okay, we're up to Article seven. And I'll ask Selectman Walker.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $42,000 from free cash from Mount to purchase an administrative cruiser for the police department and dispose of the 2,000 Ford Interceptor in the best interest of the town. This has gone through capital planning, it's gone through the finance committee, it's a 2013, it's in the rotation, it's got 160,000 miles on it, it's going to be used for the chief, and it's going to be on patrol.
So appropriate the money from free cash to buy a new police car. Okay? All those in favor will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. Motion carries. JR Colby, make a motion.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $41,424.24 from the ambulance enterprise free cash account to purchase a power load stretcher system.
Sir, the amount you read was 41,000?
Judge, if I may. Marshall Justerson, Finance Committee. When we approved, when we got this motion, it had in it an extra, which was an extended warranty. In talking with the police chief, we decided that we did not need the extended warranty since they have to certify this every year. And so we took that cost out, so you guys don't have to pay that extra.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is an instance...
The final number, the final number is 41,424.24.
This is, this is an instance, we don't, one of the things about town meeting to understand is you don't vote on an article, you vote on a motion made under the article. The purpose of the article is to inform the townspeople that that subject is coming up and we will be taking a vote on it. And the motion can be different from the article itself as long as it's within the framework of the article and people are properly notified. In this case, it's buying the police cruiser, and we have to appropriate a little less money than we were told by the warrant. Okay? Is that all clear? Okay. It's yes, sir. Do you wish to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Rigan, Central Street. I really have a question that will cover three articles, eight, nine, and 11. All regard funds, transfers from funds. And I've been looking all day, and I haven't found a balance of any of these funds. So if we have an ambulance free cash account, what is the amount of the ambulance free cash account? If you just let me finish. Same with the fire alarm, and the one I'm particularly interested in is the cable access one, which I'll come back in Article 11. But just generally speaking, where can we find balances of these enterprise accounts?
Okay, good question, and I'm sorry we didn't have that in there for you. For the ambulance fund, we have about $107,000 in that fund. You want to do the peg?
Fire alarm?
I don't know what the...
Actually, if you make it part of the motion, that'd be great. That's really what I was looking for.
The, I don't, I don't know what we have in the fire alarm. I think that was just cleaning out that account. That's all that's in it. You want to peg? The question is, can we... Yes.
Forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars and twenty-four cents.
So, we saved a lot of money. What do we spend it for? Okay, so we'll take a vote now on the motion under Article Eight to spend the 41,000 plus on the new cruiser. Vote. Sorry, have I got the wrong one? This is on the ambulance enterprise fund to purchase the power load stretcher system. Okay? So the, I think you understand it now, and if you're in favor of the motion, you'll vote yes, otherwise no. The voting is open. Article Nine, now I hear a motion.
I move that the town transfer the sum of $150 from the receipts reserve fire alarm account to repair the fire alarm system.
Motion is made and seconded. I assume no discussion, and we can go directly to the vote. Vote now. Proceed to Article Ten. Do we have a motion?
I move that the town transfer the sum of $220,000 from free cash to repair and renovate 31 Plum Island Boulevard for the purposes of providing seasonal restroom facilities and a police department annex. Now, I also do want to state, too, that through the efforts of Senator Bruce Tar, there's been a $40,000 grant from the state for this project, and if we don't use that before June 30th, we're going to lose that additional 40,000 grant money. The town has already invested significant money into this building to purchase it, and to not complete this project, I feel would be a terrible waste of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sir? Motion is made to amend Article Ten to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $35,000 from free cash to furnish a sanitary trailer eight feet wide by 15 feet long with one handicap and two regular toilets for Plum Island Center. Okay, this is a motion to amend the article that is made by the selectman. Sir, yep, Mr. Moran? Well, we haven't heard the argument first.
This motion would provide a trailer which could be set up on the ocean side, and be put in there just for the summer and removed every year, very simple. What you're doing in building a bathroom facility in the other structure is causing a terrific issue on people crossing the street to get to that facility. There's other better ways, I believe, right now, at least in the short term, for very little money, a trailer could be put in and maintained just for the summer, no exposure to storms, and if so, can pull out very quickly. That's the explanation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winter. Alertly informs me that we did not receive a second on the motion. I hear the second. We are on the floor, and thank you for your motion, Mr. Moran. Now, the thing that is before the meeting is, right now, is the motion made by Mr. Moran to amend the main article. Mr. Thurlow.
If I might. You know, we spent $350,000 for this concrete block building at the lowest point on Plum Island, and it's going to flood this year. If you take a look, I want everybody to go down to the island, just take a look and see what happened to the beach in front of the parking lot down there. The first storm we had this year, and all that beautiful white beach is completely gone. It's completely gone. We have, at high tide, in the last storm, it went right up to the parking lot. And this is the year, if we have a normal winter, that water is going to come through there and right down and flood that building, and that building is very flood prone. And I strongly support a portable structure here that we can get the heck out of there in the event of a storm, and we can get it out of there in the winter. You can plug it into the sewer. It would be best up, up front at the beach, so they don't have to cross the road, but you can plug it into sewer, plug it into water, plug it into electricity, heated, air-conditioned, no smell, and in the wintertime, it's gone, you don't have to worry about it. But this, this building where it is now is, is a disaster waiting to happen? We wasted $350,000. Let's not throw away 220 more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thurlow. Vernon Fields, 64 Main Street, Bythville. It's a great idea to put a trailer down there because Newburyport doesn't seem to be able to keep theirs open. It turns into a fish cleaning station rather than a toilet, and we'd be better off to just pay rent on the trailer. If it doesn't work, we'll get rid of the trailer, we're all set, we haven't spent a whole bunch of money. Mr. Moderator?
Idea of putting an annex down there. Tony Matthews, Main Street. We just spent 8.3 million dollars on a police station three miles away. I don't think there's any need to put an annex down there, too.
JR Colby, I live at 31 Low Street. I've lived in town every day of my life. I just want to speak to trailers historically in this town. Before we had this new school, I went to the old round school. I took lessons in a trailer outside with stained interior walls. At the town hall, we had leak and moldy trailers, and I know there's another trailer that scenario I'm not even thinking of right now, but at the dump. Trailers are like campers. They have a lifespan, they're not very robust. When they leak and they mold, they're not easily repairable. We'll get a lot more mileage out of permanent structure. That building that's located down there now is no more flood prone than any other building on that street. We've had many requests from citizens and business owners requesting bathroom services on Plum Island because the businesses and the restaurants get inundated by people crossing the street that Fred was referring to to use all of their bathrooms. I think as far as fish cleaning and things like that, a lot of it's been blown out of proportion. Hey, it's a beach community, you might see someone cleaning the fish. Thank you. Mr. Moderator?
Part that I'm concerned about is a police annex also. Piddle Hall has a room for the police department right now. It has separate entrance, it has a separate way in the bathroom, separate exit, and then it's not used, so we don't need another police annex. $50,000 total for a bathroom, it's a lot of money, mind-blowing.
Ma'am?
Susan Brillo, 24th Street on Plum Island. Basically, just reading what he said, we do have a police annex facility at the Plum Island Taxpayers Hall, and that can still be used. I just want to make sure that people voting know that we do have that annex already. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Sir?
I'm Steve Manchin of Newbury, and I support the amendment. I think that locating a facility on the ocean side makes a lot of sense because it'll cut down the traffic going across Northern Boulevard. Under current conditions, the traffic can be a real nightmare for those of us that live down Northern Boulevard to have people going back and forth across the street to use a bathroom. It's only going to make the traffic situation worse. So I think the proposal is a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Manchin and Mr. Jesperson.
We've been dealing with bathroom issues on Plum Island for years. I think the proposal of, for lack of a better term, half-assing it and putting a trailer out there is ridiculous. We have the opportunity to build something for our community that will serve all of us well. We have bought the property, we're halfway there. We were guaranteed more money than we got from the state, but if we go with the trailer, we're looking at the money we did get, a gift horse in the mouth, and we're going to put something out there that essentially will get trashed like the porta potties that everyone fights about every year. This is not a solution to the problem, that would be an interim step. We have the opportunity to make things better, let's take it.
This will be the last speaker.
Erica Coles, Jacobson, 15 Scottland Road. Speaking as a citizen, no longer on a board, I completely support Damon's point. We bought this building for a purpose. Let's do the right thing. Put the money into making permanent bathrooms where we have a safe facility that we can use, it doesn't get trashed every year, it is done by people who are supporting the town, serving on boards, running for election, and helping create a future. A permanent structure rather than having trailers that we're coding in and out, having to replace and justify why they need to be replaced. A bathroom facility and the people crossing the street, the number of people crossing that street is the same. It's not a major traffic concern. If anyone here ever goes up to the beaches in New Hampshire on 1A, there's tons more traffic and people cross the street safely. We can be a very proud community, a very proud beach community that looks good and has bathrooms. It's sanitation. Let's just do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. The member, we are on the amendment to the main motion, the amendment being the trailer facility. And so all those in favor of the trailer facility rather than the permanent bathrooms, which are represented by the main motion, all those in favor of substituting the trailer proposal will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. Voting is open. The amendment does not pass, so we're back now to the main motion to transfer the sum of $220,000 for the purpose of providing seasonal restroom facilities and the police department annex. All those in favor of that? What? I thought we had had discussion. The whole discussion that preceded has been, which was that, the trailer proposal or this proposal? Okay, I'll allocate a very short amount of time for discussion on the main motion.
Margaret Thomas, 12 Independence Way in Newbury. I have three questions. The first one has to do with the operating expenses for this. Where is that coming from, and has that been allocated from someplace?
Okay, I can, I can answer that. That would be a normal operating expense, which would be in our budget. It's not in here, but it would be part of something that would fall under DPDW or one of the other departments.
Do we have an estimate of what that might be?
I do not.
When would we have that? And these don't count against my questions yet.
That I, I don't know.
All right. Operator, design review. So we talked a little bit about not needing the police annex there. Do we get to review this design at some point? $220,000 is a lot of money to spend on a $350,000 building. So do we get to determine, we, the town, get to determine what's going to go into this building?
The, the design is completed at town hall for anyone that'd like to view it. I'd also just like to state that the police annex aspect of this is being blown a little bit out of proportion. It's a room above the size for a table with four to six chairs and some plugins for equipment. It's not overly elaborate.
My last point has to do with a comment that was made earlier about flooding, and I've been down there when the entire street's been flooded, so we know that it does flood in that area. Is this building going to be required to go on pilings as you force the rest of the island to go on pilings for this amount of change?
This is a pre-existing building that we are renovating. It's not going to be on pilings.
Other people who are pre-existing buildings, you have to put in a certain amount of money for ending up having to go on pilings as well. So are you telling me that that's not a requirement for existing, pre-existing buildings?
That would be a question for the building inspector, which I'm sure would have been caught by now. I, I can't, I can't answer that question. Sam is waving that, our building inspector.
Mr. Moderator? One thing, too. If any building's able to withstand some water in a flooding circumstance, it's certainly a bathroom with tile that you have a hose to clean it up. Not saying it's going to like to be flooded, but most of the damage in a flooding situation to a bathroom is going to be minimal. All right, Mr. Manchin.
Steve Manchin of Newbury, once again. I strongly contest the assertion that a structure away from the ocean side is not going to have any effects on the traffic. People that are saying that do not have the familiarity with Northern Boulevard that many of us that live up there do. You're going to impede the quality of life as we're waiting to try and get through that intersection as people are going back and forth, perhaps not looking very carefully at the traffic on, on, the traffic. So again, I really strongly contest that assertion that's being made. I'm also really concerned about the maintenance aspects. I take the time, I'm talking about how a pig and a polk say, well, it's going to cost them money, but we don't know how much it is to cost to maintain the facility. Further, if you've seen the porta potties, you think they're getting trashed, well, what do you think's going to happen to this building across the street? Similarly, it's going to be trashed. It's going to be available seasonally, they say. So right now during December, I suppose, that we afford people to send on businesses trying to use their bathrooms, just as there is right now. I think this is a really bad idea, and further, I would suggest that given the way property values are on Plum Island, we could sell the property that we purchased a year ago, make money on it, not spend $220,000 on this, use the money we get from the sale of the property, and by not spending $220,000 more, and put it into reconstructing town hall, which is definitely a priority for the entire community. So I ask you to have some mercy on those of us to drive up and down Northern Boulevard and vote this down.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manchin. Any further discussion? Last speaker.
I'm Ron Walton on Anchorway, and I've lived in Newbury for 80 years, 60 years of sea for Plum Island, and I've been. Plum Island, and I've been, I've watched rows of cottages roll into the ocean. Mother Nature can be a mean mother, and I'll tell ya that it's, I think, a very poor investment for us to put a portable, I hate not portable, but a permanent structure for bathrooms. They have to be maintained, they have to be taken care of, and a trailer system, which I've seen in a lot of locations, can fill in the situation of having a restroom system close to the beach area where you don't have to walk across the road, and it's well maintained. If anything happens physically to it, it's replaced. If you build a building there, it's got to be maintained by someone, and those are expensive things to do seven days a week and keep it maintained. And I've watched storms come right down through the center there, and, and like we say, Mother Nature can be a mean mother. I think building a permanent structure there is very, is a waste of money in respect. And the smart thing is to have a portable facility that can be cleaned, maintained, as long as you're doing business with person, with a company that provides this whole process.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walton. Is there any, do any of the proponents wish to speak last? Okay, I think we're in a position to, yep.
I just wanna speak. Currently, the town has portable bathroom facilities on the island, and the material, for lack of a better word, that is in those bathrooms, like toilet paper, doesn't stay in those bathrooms, and it comes out and it flows down the beach, and it's, it's, it's filthy. And this is, this is an opportunity that we have to bring the facilities across the street. As Erica Jacobson said, it's not unique to the beach communities, we're a beach community. We just need to move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Greca. Okay, we're ready to take the vote. All those in favor of the motion will vote aye. All those opposed to the project in its present form will vote no, and we may proceed to Okay, the motion goes in. The, we're up to Article 11. Yes, Mr. Manchin.
Last couple meetings, we've seen an effort by some of the selectmen to bring a vote back after it's suffered fail. Can we put the motion on the table, re-vote it, make sure we don't get a reconsideration done at the last minute? I'm a little bit concerned, we may see that vote being used again, so I'd like to confirm the vote, or to say we're done. Better yet, to say we're done and not have it be brought back.
Well, it's in, in the absence of a motion to reconsider, I think we're talking about an abstraction.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're up to Article 11, which has to do with the PEG funding.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $137,000 from the Recedes Reserve Cable Television PEG Access Special Revenue Fund to support PEG access services if appropriate.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion, Mr. Moran? Yes, a couple people wanna be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm reading at 7th Street. I promise I do that. My curiosity from the cable contractors, there are franchise fees that the cable company pays the town. Everybody's cable bill has a $6 or $7 item every month that goes to the franchise fund. I'm not sure what the PEG fund is or what the balance is, and if this equipment's nine years old and we haven't spent money in 12 years, I, the math just, I haven't got enough fingers to add up where we could be in terms of buying equipment. And where we're going to is we don't need the franchise fee because we're not gonna spend the money, then why don't we lower the fee?
Is it close to my mic, please?
Okay, I'm trying to, this feedback, that's all.
Okay. Feedback is because you're far from the microphone. Okay, right in. There you go. So, we've got somewhere north of $600,000 in that fund. The $137,000, and we haven't spent any money for a while because we were waiting to move to town hall and upgrade the equipment at that time. What we have now is equipment we can no longer service, it's no longer supported, so we have to, have to make those changes. The changes in the equipment will be, for the most part, not a hundred percent, for the most part, it will be something that can be transferred if and when there's an update or a renovation to town hall. We also have used some of this funding for a audiovisual system in the school, one of the schools as well, so it's available for that as well.
So we are spending money.
Yes, we are spending money. It built up because we were holding back and not spending money in, in anticipation of some changes in location.
Potentially, we're gonna have a $500,000 new system in town hall.
I don't think we're gonna have a $500,000 system in the town, in the town hall, but we can support other organizations and the schools with this system, with this, with this fund.
Gotcha. And I can't get like $3 off my cable bill?
No, you can't.
Mr. Moran, can I speak? Yes. I was, like I said, the money that we voted in the last town meeting has helped so much our fighting that they're gonna be able to go live soon. This money is needed, and it's not tax money. Once again, it's not tax money. This money is needed so we can start putting out meetings live, we can start putting, it's like, we, we need these channels, this time. So, and once again, it's not a tax dollar.
Thank you. Think we can proceed to a vote? All those in favor of the motion will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no. The motion carries. Article 12 is, because it involves the sale of a parcel of Newbury land, it will require a two-thirds vote. Could I hear a motion under the article?
I move that the town votes to sell possibly land off the ward just to contain approximately 7.4 acres, as shown on the Cessna map R39ISWAT5, which was acquired by the town through the issuance of a foreclosure judgment by the Massachusetts Land Court on September 26, 2016, for unpaid real estate taxes, as allowed by and in compliance with Mass General Law Chapter 30B, Section 1 and 16, and to authorize the board of selection to intervene to any and all requirements required to initiate this such sale.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ma'am?
Margaret Thomas, Independence Way. Do we have an idea of what this is gonna sell for?
Sorry, what was the question?
I think discussion is over. Mr. Brown, you dropped your hat. All those in favor of the motion will vote aye. All those opposed will vote no. The motion passes. Up to the last article, Article 13. Mr. Walker?
I move that the town amend, the town amend the general bylaws for the purpose of correcting typological errors, adding and deleting punctuation and adding and deleting non-substantial and Article 13 of the warrant. I worked really hard on this. Thank you. It's amazing, thanks.
The, this is a job only a lawyer could love, and fortunately, we have a generous lawyer in town, Larry Doyle. That's Larry Murphy, Larry Murphy, right here. Mr. Murphy, thank you for showing, catching, catching all these missteps. It's, I assume it will pass unanimously and with great gratitude, the vote of thanks to Mr. Murphy. Okay? Anyone opposed? Oh, do we have a second? Okay. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of the article. Yeah, okay. 165 to 7. That's very, very interesting. Are you a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?